Good evening, everyone. Good evening Wilmington. Welcome to the July 22 school committee meeting. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You've gotten much better at that, my friends. All right. The next item on our agenda is actually the school committee reorganization subcommittees. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to skip and address this in August. Seeing some nods, is that okay?
No issue here.
That's fine with me.
Yes, that's okay.
Try and get right to the order of business this evening, which is the tentative plans for reopening, so trying to streamline just a bit. Next, we have approval of minutes for June 24, 2020. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Byrne, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have some warrants payroll ending 7/1/2020 and 7/15/2020. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Samaha, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. And then finally, if the committee doesn't have any objections, I'd like to move the second reading approval of the Wilmington High School 2020-2021 School Parent Handbook. This is the second read, so we can do a motion and approve unless there is some discussion, in which case we'll keep it where it is. Is there a motion to approve this handbook? Mrs. Byrne, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. Is there any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, moving right along. Item five is public comment. We have 12 comments this evening. As a reminder to the public, you are able to submit your public comments using the Google form by 4:00 PM the day of each of our meetings. There will be many questions tonight, and we anticipate many of the questions will be addressed in the presentations. For those that aren't, we'll work over the next few weeks to provide information and answers to you and the community. We do appreciate your participation in this process and your patience as we navigate the reopening of our schools. And as a reminder, this is public comment, not a public hearing, so we will not engage in a Q and A. And with that, I will pass it over to Vice Chair Ragsdale.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to read out the names of the people who have asked to make comments tonight. And when you hear me read out your name, please turn on your video and Ms. Dixie will unmute you to make your comment. And we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes so that we can get everyone in. So first, for a public comment tonight, and also, could you restate your name? I'll try to pronounce everyone's names correctly, but if you could restate your name and state your address before making your comment, please. So first, we have Phyllis Young. So Tristan, if you can unmute her.
Hi. How are you all? Sorry, did I join you guys late? No, it started at seven, correct?
Yeah, we started at seven.
Okay, all right. Oh, for a public comment. So I just wanted to find out some more information in terms of what the school was deciding to do and to what the schools were going to do for the fall. And I just wanted us to be mindful of kind of the disparities that kind of exist even in our community here in Wilmington. And thinking about issues of equity and just how those things are kind of being considered as we process what the fall is going to look like for our kids, especially if there are hybrid bottles or, you know, straight in person and of course, just the online option. As a parent of a child who's going to be starting middle school, there's, I am kind of going into this school year with a lot of trepidation because she's going into a new school environment, and I'm not sure what that's going to look like, even with hybrid in-person and online models and just trying to think about what's the best for our kids, but also what's the best for our administrators and teachers who are going to also put their safety at risk going into the schools. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Gisela Soderberg. Do we have Gisela?
I do not see her on the list here.
Okay, then we'll, I'll see, I'll come back to her at the end and see if she's joined. Then after that is Gina Mondi. Do we have Gina?
I also do not see Gina.
Okay, then next we have Anil Puruit.
He doesn't appear to be on the call either.
Okay, then next is Melissa Plowman.
Melissa is here.
Hi, good evening. Um, everyone can hear me, yes? Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
I just would like to start by commending Dr. Brand for his leadership to our entire community during such a difficult time right now. I also want to extend a huge thank you to the staff who have been volunteering their time and working tirelessly on the reopening plans for the fall. I've been privileged to witness the work that they're doing right now. And it's been incredible and commendable, and I just think that the community should really extend a great deal of gratitude to this group of people. That's not the reason I'm commenting tonight, but I did want to say that to start. I submitted commentary because as the parent of an incoming eighth grader, I have some significant concerns about the status of leadership at the middle school. While I want to respect Mr. Phillips' right to privacy, I do feel that the community also has the right to better understand the plan for this coming year, particularly in light of the inherent challenges that we're facing returning to school this fall. Parents need to know if another search for a settled principal will be conducted. Mr. Phillips also launched a program at the middle school last year called Launchpad, which in theory should be useful in supporting our students' social and emotional learning, which is a pillar and a guidepost to our reopening plans per the DESI recommendations. Since Mr. Phillips apparently will not be in a leadership position this fall, I'd like to know if the school plans to continue with Launchpad, if it will be tweaked to be more effective in supporting our students socially and emotionally, and who will be consulting with and supporting staff in that process. Assuming that all staff return to the middle school, I'd like to just point out that Dr. Quirk would be in the role of the interim principal, I'm assuming, and that leaves Mr. Faircloth in the assistant principal role. So we are essentially down an administrator in that building. And based on a historical perspective, I'm assuming that there has been identified a need for two assistant principals. Myself and many other concerned parents that I speak to need to know what the administrative structure in the plan is for this year. Who's doing what? Who do we contact? Who do we communicate with? The timeliness of communication back and forth with parents was a real challenge from January through the spring. And I really feel like it needs to be a priority, particularly in light of these challenges that we're facing, and we need to see some improvement with that. Children are going to take our lead in terms of how they transition back to learning this year. So if we, the parents, are feeling unsettled or insecure because we are lacking information, that's unfortunately going to trickle down to our children. And I know myself and many of my friends and families that I speak with want to support the staff, but it's really hard to do so when we feel like we're in the dark trying to navigate a maze that provokes a lot of anxiety and uncertainty. I feel strongly that we cannot start the year this way. I respect, I really truly respect how busy we all are planning for the reopening with regard to COVID-19, but I feel that we would be very remiss to overlook and not to address the concerns that continue to exist at the middle school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Emily Gardner. 20 Suncrest Ave.
Oops. Hi there. Thank you, Dr. Brand and committee for letting me speak. Thank you for all that you are doing for the reopening. I want to speak on behalf of my son and my daughter. They both have pretty severe ADHD. My daughter has anxiety and my son has DMDD. They have suffered tremendously through this. I have called, emailed, written, and been a part of conversations with anyone who would listen, and the most common response is, "They're not behind. Everyone is experiencing this. The kids will be okay." And to the parents who are trying to support neurodiverse children, this is extremely frustrating and a bit of a slap in the face. Our kids are the ones who are not making any progress at all or who are still regressing even during attempted instruction. In the spring, my son could easily take five hours to complete five math problems and write two sentences. It was horrible, and I'm a teacher and I tried my best. This type of situation happened every day. My daughter was assigned Brain Pop videos and would usually get 20 to 30% on them and then moved on to something else. The teachers tried, and they tried hard. You know, I know what it's like to try to figure out what you're doing and give them the best that you can, but this way of learning failed them, both of them. I have hoped that a virtual-type education this fall would be more well-planned and methodical, however, it would still be a failure for them. It's overstimulating, it's impersonal, and most importantly, it's not following their IEPs. Socially and emotionally, it's even worse. They both have trouble reading social situations and responding appropriately. They are impulsive. They are already years behind their peers, and again, in a virtual model, there's no opportunity to lessen the social gap. Emotionally, my son is on eggshells constantly. My husband has spoken before and shared how we almost lost our 10-year-old son to a residential treatment home last spring. It was extremely scary, and this fall, if he realizes he's not going back, I'm not sure we'll be able to keep him out of it this time. He needs to get help. He needs to feel like everything hasn't been taken away. Virtual check-ins and feeling maps aren't going to help a traumatized child. And honestly, it's the equivalent of handing us a bucket of water and asking us to put out a forest fire without any further assistance. It feels as though we're not heard, and it feels as though our children don't matter. There are also hundreds of other families who are about to be forced into an impossible situation. Many families need to work and can't afford to stay home. Without the ability to work, food insecurity and housing stability become huge issues. Personally, I just want to be allowed to teach. My school will be forced to hire my replacement if I have to stay home with my two special needs children. My kids don't have a voice, and so I need to speak for them. We need in-person school for our kids, and we need paper or pencil work with real textbooks, workbooks, and live lessons. The DESI states that high-need students should be prioritized for full-time in-person learning. It also recommends schools and districts make additional provisions to provide as much in-person instruction for those with moderate and severe disabilities. Substantially separate classrooms, sorry, it specifically mentions full-time instruction for substantially separate classrooms, even if the rest of the school's hybrid. They need it for their academic and social emotional well-being and success. Please help them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to circle back to Gisela Soderberg and see if she's joined the call. Ms. Dixie, do you see her?
She is here. I've just asked her to unmute.
Great. Gisela, are you able to unmute yourself? Hmm, we don't seem to be able to. All right, I will, I will try to come back to that when we're timed. Let's see, but I'll, let's see if Gina Mondi is on the call to make a comment.
She is still not on the call.
Okay, let me ask again for Anil Puruit.
I do not see him on the call either.
All right, and then I guess we can try one more time for Gisela Soderberg.
No, she hasn't asked to join back in. It looks like she disconnected.
All right, then, then that's all the people that we had listed who were planning to comment themselves. We do have some comments that were submitted to the committee that I will now read. The first one is from Samantha Burke, 36 North Street. And let me come down, and her comment is a question. Will siblings/twins be able to attend the same days? So that is her comment. The next comment is from Haley Diaz, sorry, Hallie Diaz, 1 Wall Street. And that comment is, "I would like to know what the plan is when one child in the classroom has a temperature over CDC regulations. Do we then quarantine the whole class, the class of the student siblings? Is this going to be the most common situation during cold and flu season? And if so, how are we remotely meeting those children's needs? I feel like this is going to be causing more of an issue than just coming up with a solid remote learning system." The next comment is from Christine Zuck, 23 Randolph Road. And that comment is, "Will content of remote learning be consistent throughout each grade? If parents want to organize remote learning groups, consistent content from day to day is critical, fifth-grade parent." The next comment is from Paul Holland, 7 Moore Street. And he says, "I prefer to have the option of remote learning for my child. Most of the schools are older and likely poorly ventilated. Wearing masks and social distancing is unlikely to work well with children. Community transmission is likely to go up if children must be physically present indoors with parents and grandparents also at risk at home. I suggest distance learning for the fall. The schools can still schedule short optional activity together intermittently throughout the term for those children who wish to attend indoor or outdoor with the appropriate precautions, and lunches can be served for those who wish to attend." The next comment is from Chris Roof, 22 Beach Street. And that comment is, "Thank you for your work and dedication to the families in Wilmington. I have a few questions. First, how will the town handle specialists like music and art that switch between buildings? Secondly, if the members of the school committee cannot safely meet in person, why do you feel that our children and staff can do so with more people in a room? What are the daily cleaning procedures for each school level? Thank you." And the last comment is from Christian Hoffman, 27 Forest Street. "As we continue to discuss the makeup of three separate reopening plans, there is little doubt in my mind that any plan will incorporate some portion of remote learning, despite the potential harm it will do to the educational needs of our children, including proper socialization, which is often overlooked. Many comments I read following the June survey results shared my assessment of what little remote learning was provided following school closure, namely that it was woefully inadequate. Given school closure took us all by surprise, I want to be clear that I do not fault individual faculty members for the substandard educational sessions, but rather WPS in its entirety for failing to provide basic support, be it technical, instructional, or otherwise, to the teachers tasked in the educational needs of our children. As the reopening committee prepares its submission on the reopening plan, special consideration should be given regarding the specifics surrounding a remote learning plan, assuming a worst-case scenario 100% remote. How are teachers/faculty going to be held accountable in their duties in providing quality education to our children? What tools/training do they require to provide said education? We need to adequately prepare for this inevitability, and to date, I have yet to see any concrete plans to la my concerns." All right, and that is the end of public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ragsdale, and thank you, community members, for participating in this process. We do hope you get some answers this evening, and as I said earlier, we'll work to provide additional answers and support in the coming weeks. And with that, we are moving into old business. There is none, so right into new business. And item A is the COVID-19 update. Hello, Dr. Brand, can you provide us with an update, please?
I can. Good evening, everybody. Tristan, can I, oh, I can't share my screen. Can you see that all right? Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to be clear, listed under the agenda this evening, there are a number of specific items that are outlined as it relates to COVID-19. And in the end, I tried to shape this update really into two parts. And so this evening, I'm going to begin with a pretty extensive presentation here that tries to provide the school committee and the community with information regarding Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, ongoing guidance for school districts, local health recommendations to briefly touch upon, building capacity updates, as well as parent guardian and staff survey results. Following this presentation, we have a number of members of the Wilmington Public Schools' reopening advisory group who are here this evening to provide an update on their work to this point in time. So my hope is that together, these two presentations will provide a lot of timely information that in many respects addresses quite a few of the questions I think that were included as part of our opening public comment. So with that, let me begin. First part here, just to recap, and sort of the lens of this is for that member of the community who may be sort of chiming in for the first time after a few weeks of summer session, and there's been a lot that has transpired. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I'll refer to that as DESI throughout the course of the presentation, has been ongoing in issuing a number of pieces of guidance. I'll give you a more specific highlight of that in just a moment. It's being termed initial guidance, and that continues to be the case because final guidance for the fall reopening of schools by DESI has not yet been released. And so I think that's an important piece to point out. The Department of Ed had an extensive number of stakeholders, far too many to list here, that were involved in their own respective development of these plans, including medical, medical experts and panelists who helped contribute to ultimately the direction that this plan here in the Commonwealth is pursuing, and that is trying to get back as many, as many students in person to in-person learning in the fall. It is indeed the case that, though this guidance is just that from the Department of Education, there are some elements that indeed are expectations or requirements, but also leave a broad number of areas that have to be determined at the local level or the school district level or the regional level as it might be. And so that's really what's giving rise in our own context here with the need to develop an extensive working group or advisory group to help develop plans that are are jumping off, if you will, of the guidance from DESI, but still needing to go deeper at the local level. As has been mentioned, there is a, there's an extensive advisory group, which I'll echo the comments earlier shared this evening. They have been working tirelessly, hours upon hours, truthfully, each week, early morning meetings, late evening meetings, all with an effort to try and provide the best-laid plans for the Wilmington Public Schools and our community, our staff and our students to help shape our reopening. That includes, as you'll see, the specific members later this evening, many community members, parents, guardians, teachers, including representatives of our, the WTA, the Wilmington Teachers Association, and administrators who have been working collectively and tirelessly on this work. So first off, a little bit more deeper update on DESI's guidance to date. Rightly or wrongly, unlike some other states, Massachusetts has been developing and then pushing out these different pieces of guidance, if you will, over the course of the last number of weeks. The initial fall school reopening guidance was released June 25. Specific guidance around special education for the fall was released on July 9. Additional guidance for fall reopening, again, not the final plans, but additional reopening guidance was released on July the 10th. And then, and I'll highlight some of the specifics here more later in the slides, the specific process that now has been put forward for districts to respond to by a couple of dates that are coming up very quickly. More recently, on July 17, specific and in-depth protocols for responding to COVID-19 scenarios within school buildings was released. It's a, it's a fairly extensive document, and it really digs deeper into trying to help guide school communities to respond when there are specific students or staff with COVID-19 symptoms or diagnoses. There is a number of pieces of guidance that's still to come in the, in the coming weeks. Just going to pause here for just one second. Just want to check something. Okay, the, all of the guidance, by the way, that I've been referring to is available if anyone in the community is interested in looking through this. It's extensive. It's on the DESI webpage, and we can certainly provide that link for those that are interested. This is an overview slide from a recent presentation that DESI provided for all of the different pieces of guidance that's out there. So where we are heading, as mentioned, June 25, the release of the initial guidance. The Commissioner of Education has made it very clear that schools and districts are required to create a plan that includes three learning models. In-person learning, so with all students in schools, unless students and families opt to keep their children in a remote learning environment. In-person learning with new safety requirements, a hybrid of in-person and remote learning, and then remote learning. And I'll define each of those a little bit more in a slide or two. Step one of this process that applies for all districts in the Commonwealth is to complete and submit a preliminary reopening plan by July 31. And then by August 10, school districts are obligated to finalize and submit comprehensive plans to the Commissioner of Education, specifically towards what the reopening for the fall is intended to look like in the districts. Just to comment briefly on having students return to school. This is obviously a deep-seated question that is understandably so, getting much attention and much commentary, much debate throughout the country. It is indeed the case, as I mentioned earlier, that DESI engaged an extensive number of medical experts and panelists and so on to help guide their direction that they opted to take for the fall. I think it's just worthy to point out, the American Academy of Pediatrics, or AAP, they've also issued respective and extensive guidance around trying to help local leaders, public health, and educators in shaping the return of students to the fall. They also are shooting for trying to bring back students in person where that's appropriate. And the Massachusetts chapter of the AAP, I think it's also worthy to note, has endorsed those DESI guidelines, also with that goal of bringing back most students in the Commonwealth, and this is a specific quote from a recent memo that they released. We're talking an awful lot, and we heard this in the opening public comments tonight. It's becoming part of our lexicon now. It quickly, as it's turned here for thinking about reopening. And here, at least in Massachusetts, largely, these are the three models, if you will, will around what schooling potentially could look like, or will look like, or may shift between at some point in the coming year. So in-person learning is a little bit more self-explanatory, where students are in school in a more traditional environment. Understandably, though, with modifications around health and safety, which I'll speak to in a moment. And again, just to point out that the Department of Education currently is indeed making it a requirement to allow students to remain in a remote learning environment, should families choose. Hybrid learning, the middle column is some combination of between in-person and remote learning with, when they're in person, the safety requirements in place. And specifically, and this goes back to that guidance that I mentioned a little bit earlier, one of the pieces of guidance that was released around districts striving to identify higher-needs students to seek their participation in a more full-time capacity in person. And then finally, on the far right-hand side of the screen, remote learning, which we also have come to experience, obviously, in Massachusetts through the spring, where instruction is delivered remotely with students at home. So I mentioned there's these two steps to the planning process that districts are feverishly working through right now, based upon the requirements from the Commissioner. Part one is a feasibility study, as well as and the feasibility piece, let me pause there, is to try and identify, based upon the physical distance requirements, whether or not all students or some students can fit literally within classrooms, as well as to indicate to the department with a preliminary thinking around where districts are going. Part two is a little bit more of an in-depth description of that requirement that I mentioned earlier, and that is to submit three reopening models. So just to pause on that for a moment, even if right at this moment there would be perhaps a district who is committed to having all students return to in-person instruction in the fall, they also still have to submit plans for both a hybrid model and a remote model. So the expectations that, once those final plans are submitted to the department, the Commissioner again has made that very clear, that is part of this package, if you will, there has to be an executive summary that is made available to the community that is easy to understand, not riddled with the educational jargon that so often, I know so many of our documents tend to adopt, but in a way that is user-friendly for staff or students, is that obviously appropriate, and for our parent guardians. A letter from the superintendent, and then a detailed description of those learning models that I mentioned earlier. So just to dig a little bit deeper around the requirements, the specific requirements that the Commissioner is looking for, you can see that overview here. I won't go through each of those. And forgive me for not saying at the outset, but we will make these presentations available on our district website tomorrow. So anyone in the community is welcome to access these, and we'll make sure that you have a clear path to the link of where they're located. Under remote learning, I'll just pause on that, though, and go a little bit deeper. The Commissioner of Education has also made it clear, and I made mention of this a moment ago, that we are expecting specific remote learning expectations for the fall that will be far more robust than that of the spring, including requirements for tracking of attendance, grading of assignments, and so on. And so that's been made clear by the Commissioner of Education that districts will expect that in short order. So essential safety planning is the next topic here to try and bring people up to speed. There has been an awful lot of work in trying to hone in on the respective safety guidelines that the Department of Education currently has advanced. I think that many probably know this, but these next few slides try and take that and go to a deeper level to give you a context of what this is looking like here in Wilmington, in part based upon discussions here at the local level. So masks and face coverings is the first component, if you will. And as I'm sure many are aware right now, within those initial guidelines for reopening, the Department of Education made it very clear that it is a expectation or requirement that all students grade two through 12 must wear masks and face coverings when they are in school, if they're in school in one of those learning models. All staff are required to wear those. We have had extensive discussions with our school physician, Dr. Curdo, our local director of Health, Shelley Newhouse, and Mr. In Crowe, Coordinator of Health Services, about this topic. And we've, we'll touch upon a little bit about the direction that we're planning to go there. Guidance for students in pre-K and K for face masks and coverings is currently not required from DESI. It is strongly recommended. And we'll talk a little bit more about the pre-K and K classrooms going forward. Transportation guidance is still coming. We expect that, if not later tonight, literally tomorrow. Regardless of the age of the child, any student that is taking a school bus has to wear a mask while riding. We expect, having had a bit of a preview of this today in a call with the Commissioner, that there will be a number of other requirements for transportation, including reduced capacity of the buses and a number of other things that we will be taking into consideration for part of our planning. Related to this, of course, it's hard not to talk about PPNE, personal protective equipment, in the context nowadays, of course, of all of this. The Department of Education, back in June, I believe it was, strongly recommended, urged really districts to as quickly as possible set out to acquire quick-forth acquisitions to acquire sufficient number of masks and face coverings and other related PPNE items for at least the first three months approximately of school. This list here reflects not items the district has personally taken delivery of yet, but it does reflect the list of items that we have put forth purchase orders for. Some of this has started to come in, some of it hasn't yet. But quite frankly, this list is evolving and growing almost daily with numbers increasing here, or other items that through the course of conversation have been identified. Physical distance is, of course, the second component as it relates to all of this. The current guidance from DESI within their initial reopening is to arrange classrooms with six feet distance where possible, but no less than three feet. It didn't take too long to realize that in order to have some sort of continuity for what this looked like from classroom to classroom, school to school, district to district, the more precise dimensions, if you will, to complete this measurement is the edge of the seat to the edge of the seat. So not the edge of a desk or the edge of a table, like we do have in many, many classrooms, but the edge of a child's seat to the edge of the next child's seat. And I think that's just an important piece to point out. Also, as you'll see in a moment here, point out that this idea of three feet versus six feet is actually far more significant than just a number. There's obviously a growing amount of debate, I suppose, as well, within the community around what's more appropriate. And I know that people are highly interested in that. But on a more practical level, planning for three feet versus six feet, as you'll see in a moment, is a significant difference in the ability to operate our classrooms. Based upon conversations with local health officials, who I mentioned a few moments ago, there is no question about our intention to support the DESI guidance, and we will strive for six feet distance where possible. But on a deeper level here, what this means is, and you'll see in a couple of pictures in a moment, more specifically at the elementary level, is that if you've had a, if you have a child at the elementary level currently, and you've been in classrooms, you'll have a far greater sense of the fact that there's not just tables that are accommodating students or desks, but there's also an array of other furnishings from carpets where students gather for class meeting, bookshelves, more relaxed seating for students to engage in reading and cooperative play. An elementary classroom, largely speaking, and this will also hold true for some at the older level, but primarily at the elementary level, is far more than just desks and chairs, at least in this era. These requirements really, really impact that, and the three-foot for six-foot makes a drastic difference. It also requires, per the DESI guidance, that students have to be in straight rows, all facing one direction. And as mentioned, and there are many of our classrooms that currently have tables where students are grouped together. That's not uncommon, but a traditional table, five-foot table, six-foot table presents a dilemma. It presents an obstacle because you can't seat two students at that same table. That wouldn't even allow for that three-feet distance, seat to the edge of seat to the edge of seat. So let's dig a little bit deeper into that. It's intended to provide a little bit of a view, just a sample, not, obviously, not all eight schools, but a sample asking our building administrators to set up a couple of mock rooms to what this would look like. And so this briefly showcases three of our schools with a setup of three feet distance. So in the elementary school, over on the left there, what you can see is essentially all that would have to remain in the classroom if we were to set up classes with three feet distance. Essentially, everything else would have to be removed, leaving only desks and chairs. The same would hold true at the Beltwell. However, the Beltwell has far greater issues because of the, literally the geography, the layout of that building. And this would be a drastic change. This does not look anything like that classroom would look like in a regular or typical setup. And you can see there, there are extensive tables. They would not work. Even with going three feet, we would have to purchase additional furnishings in a number of our classrooms. Beltwell and the Wildwood, just to start. You can see the high school on the far right-hand side, again, three feet distance. It can work fitting in all of the desks that would be in a typical classroom of this sort, and it's not a more specialized classroom. Six feet distance, a different view here. And when you go to six feet, this is a general statement, of course, to be sure, but essentially, it's cutting in half the population of students that could fit in that room. So in a typical elementary classroom with 20 students enrolled, which is not at all uncommon, at three feet, most of the calculations, as you'll see in a moment, lead to the belief that we can, we could fit in students. Going to six feet reduces that essentially in half. The same holds true almost at the high school, as you'll see in a moment in a table here. So this is not pictures, but numbers that try and provide a context to you. These are general, these are certainly generalizations, but they come from our building leaders who have explored this, analyzed this from a number of different angles, utilizing three feet spacing between desks, between students, rather. That's how many desks would be possible within the three-foot configuration. And a side note there about the furnishings that I mentioned a moment ago. At six feet, that changes drastically, as you can see. And so to employ six feet distance puts us, I would argue, any district, for the most part, on a very different course to simply not being able to get all students in at one time to in-person learning. Lunch considerations, you may be wondering, in the context of all of this, how does this fit in? Well, it's certainly an important consideration for those two reasons that we were talking about earlier on, safety and health. DESI is requiring six feet distance for students to eat lunch because, of course, masks, face coverings would be removed. And so even if we were, or a district were to pursue three feet distance from edge of seat to edge of seat, that would preclude the ability to use that classroom for students to eat luncheon. Because, of course, masks would not be worn while students are eating. Consuming lunch in classrooms, I think, as I do, as I know others do, I think is just riddled with challenges. These are just a few. There are many more. It's not that it's not possible, but it would be challenging. And eating lunch in the cafeteria, I think, the default would be far preferred. However, this is also problematic because, back to that six-foot distance. So there's only one visual here, one example. And thanks to Kevin Welch, who took some time to set this up for us. But these are true numbers. These are not inflated. These are not overgeneralizations. But in order to utilize the existing furniture that we have in the Shawshank with six feet distance for lunch, with a cafeteria that's approximately 40 by 60, there are 14 tables in there, 12 feet long. Currently, they run three lunches to accommodate 340 students. With six feet required, forget about the classroom, just moving aside from that, but six feet distance required for the guidelines for physical distance, Shawshank could fit 42 students per lunch. We would have to run eight lunches, which effectively would put us on a course of running lunch almost as soon as students would get in. Not practical. So a little bit deeper here to just provide it again, and this is in the broader context of sort of all of the things that we're trying to take into consideration, and that's the latest update from DESI. I'll just briefly share with you the survey results from the most recent surveys that we administered from our families and our staff. These were things that the Department of Ed strongly urged districts to do, but this would have been something that I think would have been prudent anyway to have done. I'm going to skip over this slide, just in the interest of time, but these are the these are the questions, the quantitative data that was returned from almost 1,600 surveys from our families. And you can see the percentage of families reporting that 65%, if an in-person model were used, would you send your child to school? I'll just point out that 28% certainly is an important factor in all of this, because that could swing one way or the other and could make a substantial difference or significant difference. If using hybrid and dividing likely into two groups, how many would send their, how many would currently plan to send their children to school? 68%. No, just over 6%, and I'm not sure, very similar. If we have to shift to a hybrid model, we put out there with the thought that we might be going there. What would the preference be? This was sort of a, just a dip-sticking to sort of see where folks are at. One of our focus groups later tonight will be speaking a little bit more extensively, not to this data that was returned, but some of their thinking around hybrid. If we were to remain solely remote, what would the intentions be of our parents and guardians? And you can see there, 67% yes, would certainly keep their children enrolled. 24% not sure, 8% might pursue or would pursue some alternative. We were also interested in the wearing of the, sorry, the wearing of the mask on a bus and just the overarching concerns that might be out there. Transportation is a very tricky aspect in relationship to all of this planning. You can see the breakdown there of percentage of families that would of percentage of families that would not send their children on the bus and a good number that are not sure right now. Staff survey results, very quickly, the quantitative measures that came back here. Just a quick breakdown again, in the interest of time, for those that are interested, this will all remain in this presentation. You can see that. Obstacles that staff may anticipate returning to work in person. Approximately 55% right now reporting that they didn't see any obstacles per se. Childcare issues, health conditions, taking care of other family, perhaps, the percentage there. Cleaning and safety guidelines, are there any obstacles to be resolved? We have a number of open response questions or narratives that came back that our focus groups and our leadership team will be reviewing. Face covering masks, trying to better understand if there are issues there, as is currently felt. And also trying to get at the, just again, a dipsticking of where our staff fall in relationship to their own children's situation, potential situation as it relates to their own schooling, depending on what their homeschool, home residents may be pursuing. Okay, so I'll just remind folks that tonight is meant to be an update. This is not, this is not a final plan, and as you'll see as we go through the evening, and if you haven't already, there is an awful lot of complexity to this. There is still a fluid situation, if you will, with the Department of Education pushing out guidance every week. So there's an awful lot to consider as we are trying to craft these plans. But that said, you know, we're about a week away from having to submit initial plans to the department. After a number of extensive conversations with folks, after better understanding the complexities of what our working group, focus groups have been wrestling with, after taking a more detailed look at some of those challenges that I just highlighted a few moments ago in terms of the practical operation of the facility, trying to uphold the safety and well-being and managing all of that, it's my opinion that right now, based upon what we know to be in place, based upon the requirements that we have, I just simply do not see returning to school for all students, all students whose families would send them as a viable option right now. There is just so much to try and manage and orchestrate and figure out that it is far more detailed than simply separating desks in a classroom. I also don't think that based upon what we know to be the information before us right now, that a full-scale engagement or pursuit of a remote learning model is necessary at this, it's not necessary at this time. Obviously, the Commissioner of Education or the Governor of Massachusetts could change all this a couple of weeks from now if something evolved, but based upon what we know right now, it doesn't seem to be necessary for our context here. And so that sort of takes us to preliminary thinking around what would be manageable, what would be doable, both to uphold still our commitment to safety and well-being, and also allow our staff and our students to return to an environment that is going to be very different than they left the middle of March. So preliminarily, the thinking truly right now is leading towards a hybrid learning. Again, just to state, to restate it, we have to submit and develop plans for all three learning models. But right now, if to pick one, this seems to be more in line with what would be reasonable, in my opinion, and I think fair to say in the opinion of many others working on the advisory focus group. Here's a couple of reasons why. So I think there's two aspects when I think about this, educational programming. I just, and I know others share this, I cannot see stripping down classrooms and having any of our students, but particularly some of our younger students, sitting in a desk, in a chair, for the entire day with a mask on. I think that that is going to be incredibly challenging, and it's going to incredibly change that learning experience. Setting up three feet distance is, for the most part, not in every situation, but for the most part, possible. But three feet between desks, as you saw how cramped those classrooms will be, I also think greatly transcends anything that we know to be sort of normal or typical, let alone the overarching realities of mask-wearing, kids being right on top of each other, and that there's the question, of course, of whether three feet distance is simply appropriate or not. And so to that end, I think a hybrid model allows for that restriction of students in half and enhances our ability to try and work with these incredibly challenging guidelines that we have and still get students in for a time period, as well as engage in remote learning for another time period. I also think that it can't be stressed enough, the aspect of health and safety. And I think that there is probably many other additional components that could be added to this list in terms of rationale for a hybrid model. And these are just some that seem to come to mind. A lunch piece I mentioned, the need for mask breaks, mask breaks is going to be essential. And I think moving into this new mode of asking folks to, and particularly young people, to wear these every single day, all day is going to be really tough. Early childhood centers, I'll just pause on this one for a moment because, well, it is indeed the case that there's a whole lot of elements that have to fold out or unravel here with our overall final plan, which, again, I stress, this is not. There's been an awful lot of thinking at the Beltwell and Wildwood, our early childhood centers. And I would say that right now, the thinking very much is looking towards AM and PM or half-day programs. Of all of our population of students, it seems prudent to be prioritizing trying to get this group, along with others, into school with some regularity. And so after some extensive conversation with Ms. Walsh and Ms. King, right now, it just felt appropriate to share with our parents and guardians that at this particular juncture, this is what we're looking at for our early childhood centers, based upon the reasons outlined. So there are a ton of lingering questions. We probably could fill a slide pack with just as many slides here tonight. These are just some of them that I would, I would argue, any district is wrestling with right now. These are in no particular order. It's been a source of conversation, and it's understood if we are not running full and regular programs, we literally might not be able to run all programs. How can we utilize the capacity of our teachers who may not be actually delivering a program? How do we manage hybrid scenarios? Which programs do we need to change? Music program is just one that comes to mind. Physical education will be another. I mentioned hiring new students earlier, remote assessment, staggering arrival and dismissal. This is something that is likely going to have to evolve. We're not sure what that would look like yet, but that has to be determined. And so finally, just sort of some benchmarks of where we're headed, and then that wraps up my presentation. So we're here tonight, of course, for a specific update on all of this planning. The focus groups that you're going to hear from with an update in a moment, I've asked them to provide final recommendations to me by a week today, July 29. As I mentioned earlier, July 31, preliminary plans to the Department of Education, followed by August the 10th, final plans. And we'll talk a little bit more at the end around my recommendation that we move, we move up to August, August 5th, perhaps the school committee presentation to approve our final plan. The next steps in all of this. Still an awful lot of work to do, as you can, I'm sure, get a sense of, an awful lot of planning that has to be finalized, and an awful lot of communication, training, professional development to make all of this possible. And so with that, happy to take any questions that folks might have.
So to the school committee, if you have any additional questions that are more general, that might not be included in the focus group presentation, now would be the time to ask those. If you don't, and you want to wait until after the focus group presentation, that's fine as well. Are there any questions or, Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment with regards to what Dr. Brand has brought forth thus far. I, I do, with the best hope, I think that this hybrid situation would be the most viable as opposed to like a full day pushing of what we're know, you know, what we are most familiar with. What needs to also be taken into consideration as we start the fall is that we will also be entering flu and allergy season, and it only complicates an already expected possible surge, so to speak. But it also, those symptoms that mirror, you know, the pandemic symptoms will also cause, I think, additional challenges. I think the benefit of a hybrid is if we're fortunate that we can do so safely that kids are able to keep their remote learning skills up, if not grow upon them, well, hopefully. So that if we do have to, if we are forced back into our remote learning environment because of a public health situation, at least there's very minimal transition between that. And I, again, you know, taking a light of the season that we're opening schools, I think three, three feet distance is just not conducive to students nor staff. And it's not worth the risk in placing them in a situation where it could only increase, you know, God forbid, you know, any potential exposures. But I have full faith in the studio staff that we will, you know, sanitize quite frequently. But I just want to commend, you know, just to support Dr. Brandon, his thoughts at this juncture and where, you know, of the presentation that he has brought forth, and I just wanted to support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Is there, are there any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, all right, seeing none. So Dr. Brand, we're ready to move on to the focus group presentation. Are you going to share your screen again?
I am.
Great, and you'll, great.
Okay, hopefully you can see that. Great. Okay, so the reopening advisory group is up next. We don't have everybody here by any means, but you're going to hear from representative or two from each of the eight focus groups tonight. I just, again, want to extend my absolute thanks to these folks who've been working tremendous number of hours. I have certainly not been a part of all of their meetings, but just knowing meeting weekly with the co-leaders, the extensive amount of time that has gone into this. Again, it's a combination of staff, parents, guardians, and administrators. The overarching requirement of this group is, of course, to try and develop plans that are specific to our context, that can support our operations here, but of course aligns with the Department of Education's requirements and guidelines. There are eight focus groups. There was no specific template suggested by DESI in terms of how districts might go about doing this work. But to be honest, I came up with these eight focus groups after taking a look at some of the other work that had been done in other states and other districts around in other states. And so we ended up with eight different focus groups. There's intersections and overlap, certainly within between many of these. But as I think you'll see a little bit later this evening, there's still a substantial amount of content and areas of focus that they've been attending to and thinking critically about with posing lots of questions, still lots of answers in some cases. Some guiding priorities that seem to provide, I know there's a lot here, but to try and frame their work and continuing for such things as attending to social, emotional well-being, health and safety, obviously thinking more holistically about our students, taking advantage of this time that we did not have in the spring, as no one did, to prepare for what we were embarking upon then or thrust into, aligning closely with the Department of Ed's requirements and seeking to do a host of other things to try and prepare for what we don't exactly know is to come completely. You know, a year from now and all of the transitions that we may go through, depending on this pandemic, we're trying to provide and prepare as best we can for those. So there's some deliverables that broadly speaking, these advisory groups have been asked, these focus groups have been asked to hone in on any guidance that's respectively out there from the state, not just necessarily DESI, but the Department of Public Health. What are specific requirements? What are expectations? What are possible approaches that we may need to take or could take here in our district to align with those guidelines? What school-level decisions might need to be made on a particular issue, and what training has to be provided? So with that, we are going to go in order here, and I think the intention is to ask folks to hold questions to the end. And so each of these slides follows a similar format, and we have a speaker or speakers who are going to present a brief update. And again, this is an update, not final recommendations on their, on their planning, and you'll have a sense of who's in each of these groups. So with that, I'll turn that over to our speaker for our first group. And I'll advance the slide so folks can just let me know, and I'll, I'll quick forward.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. First of all, if, as you look at our, the members in our group, you'll see that we are, it's a very diverse group with our representatives from across the district, filling many, many different roles. And also, Chris and I just would like to take a quick moment to publicly thank them for all their work they've done because it's been, it's been a challenging summer, and I don't think we would have got through it without their support. So, you know, thank you to them. You can move to the next slide, Dr. Brand. A lot of our work has stemmed from the guidance of the DESI guidance on June 25th, and that led us to many other state and federal documents. Listen, just, just a couple, but the CDC document leads to many other federal documents that have really pointed us in certain directions on where we should look within the cleaning of a facility and how to properly open, open up schools. During this whole process, it's been very interesting, and I know Dr. Brand touched on this, but you're going to notice throughout these presentations that all the different groups, there is definitely some overlap, and we all have had to work together and bounce ideas off of each other. And again, that's, that's actually been one of the more fulfilling parts of this, as we've been able to work with other groups and really work through some of the problems that we've, or challenges we've, we've come across throughout, throughout the summer. Dr. Brand, you can go to the next slide. With facilities and cleaning, it was pretty clear to break into two categories, facilities and cleaning. As we started the process, it is, we really, we really focused on facilities. And I know Dr. Brand spoke to this earlier, but it really speaks to the point that although we haven't made final recommendations, the work to open the schools has been going on throughout, throughout the summer. As we started with our facilities, we needed to find out if our students could fit in the schools, what type of shared spaces are in, are in the buildings. We spent time talking about our students, but we, there's the consideration of our administrative staff, what we have for offices, how they utilize, what's the traffic flow in an office, and within office spaces is a bigger category, which I think will be touched on in one of future presentation, other subgroups is, is our nurses' spaces and how a lot of buildings adequately serve the nurses during this time. We've also talked of ventilation systems. Complex as the overall HVAC of a building, but as simple as do your classrooms- Complex as the overall HVAC of a building, but as simple as do, do your classrooms have windows that open? We've discussed what signage needs to be added, what signage exists and the potential orders for those. And also if physical barriers need to be constructed to prevent that additional layer of safety to, for example, in an office, if we, if we need a, a barrier to allow a conversation to happen within a safe, safe distance. In, in addition to facilities, we also have to speak to how to, how to clean them. We quickly learned that there's a difference between cleaning and disinfecting and what that means. As we, as we went deeper into the, the documents. There is, we have to look at our hard surfaces, our soft surfaces with, with the realization that soft surfaces are harder to clean and disinfect. And the potential that we may have to restrict or actually remove some of the soft surfaces in the, in the buildings. And I, again, Dr. Brand did touch on that earlier. We've had a lot of discussion on the frequency of cleaning. What does that mean? When we're going to clean? What products we're going to use? And one, one final item I want to mention is shared items and how we're going to manage that. If anyone has spent any time in our, in our classrooms, we know there are items that, that students share throughout the day and we need to make sure we have plans to either have those items sanitized in between use or make sure that those items, there's enough items so the students don't have to share. If, Chris, I don't know if you're on. I don't know if you want to add anything. If not, I think we can move on to the next focus group. Okay. Thank you. I think we can move on, Dr. Brand.
All right. Great. So health and food services is, is up next. And I'll turn it over to, Doreen, are you here?
Yes, I am here.
All right. Thanks, Doreen.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dorian Crowe, the Coordinator of Nursing Services. I'm co-leading the Health and Food Services Focus Group with Mary Palin, the Administrator of Food Services. Other members of our group include Dr. Mark Curdo, our school physician, Shelley Newhouse, the Wilmington Board of Health Director, Janice Bacon Ziga, the school nurse at the Wilmington Middle School, Laura Hilliard, school nurse at the Butwell Early Childhood Center, Mrs. Chloe Callahan, parent at the Western Intermediate and Wilmington Middle School, and Mrs. Shannon Sheridan Geldart, parent at the Shawshene Elementary and Western Intermediate School. Very briefly, we'll talk about our focus, some protocols and procedures that we've already drafted. And we'll be sharing an infographic with families. You can go to the next slide, please. So our primary focus is to plan, develop and implement the necessary protocols and procedures to address the issues related to establishing safe and healthy environments and the maintenance of nutrition. We've been meeting virtually for a couple of hours a week now and have spent quite a bit of time researching and reading multiple documents and literature pertinent to our focus area on our own. Next slide, please. The protocols and procedures that we've created are based on current information that's been available to us. And as Dr. Brand already alluded to, we, the situation and information has been very fluid. And we've been receiving information as it becomes available. Very reliable sources, health experts in, in the literature we're reading is evidence-based practice. So these are some of the protocols that we've already drafted. A COVID-19 medical isolation room, sending students to the nurse during COVID-19. A staff protocol for self-monitoring illness, student and family protocol for home monitoring of illness. Alternative safe eating guidelines during COVID-19 for universal breakfast, for snacks and for lunch plan. We have also, in addition, worked on several other protocols and procedures that are not listed here. A protocol for suspected or positive COVID-19 case at school. And as you've already learned, we just recently received the document called protocols for responding to COVID-19 scenarios in school, on the bus or in the community. So we're continuing to work on, on that document. We, most recently at our last meeting, started looking at a protocol for staff traveling between schools. And I know that was one of the comments that was mentioned earlier. We're also looking at a protocol procedures for personal protective equipment and COVID-19 education and training. And so as Mr. Welsh already, already talked about as well, our groups overlap. And this is one of the areas where we overlap with them. We are collaborating with Laura Stints and the Health and PE Liaison and Elena Jewitt, the health teacher at Shawshene to draft our education plan that will be used by all teachers for educating our students. The idea is to normalize the new practices as soon as students return to school and make those routine. Next slide, please. We thought it would be helpful for families to have an information sheet containing 10 things that you can do to prepare for back to school. This would encourage families to begin practicing things at home during the summer. And I have to give credit to Tony Tompkins, a school nurse in New Jersey, who created the original document and is allowing us to edit it to, to meet the needs of our school district. Next slide. So a little bit closer look at the document. There is information that can be practiced at home, like hand hygiene, singing an alphabet song, practicing putting on and off a mask. Deciding what style masks that your child might be more comfortable with, updating emergency contacts and changing aerosolized medications because those will not be allowed in school. Next slide, please. Some other things to practice at home, three feet versus six feet distance, purchasing a thermometer. Purchasing or making additional masks because masks do need to be cleaned daily. Purchasing reusable water bottles because the water fountains will not be in service. It will be important for students immunizations and physicals to be up to date and also stay informed and use reliable resources. So at this time, we would like to thank the members of the Health and Food Services Focus and effort completing our work together. And I'd like to thank the school committee for allowing us the opportunity to share updates tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doreen. We'll move on to building scheduling and operations. And I believe both Christine McMenamin, Principal of North Intermediate School and Jeanette Quirk, interim principal at the middle school are here as co-leaders that are going to speak to their thinking and work to date.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. As, as everyone has said, we have really been working diligently, meeting two times a week, having conversations in the evenings, sharing resources and placing them in our shared drive. So there's just been a lot of ongoing work and we would like to thank all of our members. We do have a really excellent group with strong representation from all of the areas across the district, from many of the schools as well as parents, as well as Lisa Ferretta from transportation. Because the transportation topic does fall under operations. Next slide. We really established our guiding principles early in the fact that we wanted to be able to have some non-negotiables that if we were struggling or wrestling with an idea, we would go back to our guiding principles to help us. And so we wanted to make sure that we had some core beliefs that we wanted to focus in on about maximizing student engagement and participation, prioritizing, of course, the social emotional wellbeing over the academics, especially upon our return. Most importantly, we wanted to really work on providing a seamless transition. As Mrs. Burns was talking earlier, she was saying that if we start off in one and we have to soon go to something quickly over a weekend, that we have everything in place and that we can provide as smooth a transition for the, as possible for students, for families, as well as our staff members. And then importantly, at the end, we wanted to make sure that obviously in-person learning with your teachers, with your students and having that community sense, whether it's in the classroom or the whole school is the best scenario. And any hybrid model or remote model certainly cannot replicate that exact in-school experience. And that was something that we had to keep in our minds as we were going through some of our scenarios. Next slide.
Good evening. I'm going to speak on where we are with thinking about scheduling. The first thing to think about is that when dealing with the hybrid model, that teachers will focus on the students that are in front of them. Having simultaneous teaching in person and remote is not feasible for a variety of reasons. We've been continuing to look and analyze at several hybrid, hybrid models, I apologize. Some with A and B cohorts and how that looks versus the week and the day and the grouping of those days, as well as AM and PM cohorts, which potentially could have been divided by the side of town, potentially to keep siblings together. And all of that too, with looking at potentially a shortened day or a three-quarter day early release. We have been analyzing it in different models that we've seen, not only in Massachusetts, but across the country. And have been working closely with our teaching and learning focus group to make sure that we're analyzing the pros and cons of all of them. One model that the, that our group quickly thought would not be a viable or recommended model was the A and B model where it's for the weeks. Overall, we felt that that would be too long of a time, a week-long time without having students in front of us. And we thought that that was a big part of why we wouldn't want to investigate that further. And the other big piece with our scheduling is to ensure that we are giving mask breaks and hand washing opportunities throughout the school day and how that would look and what time we need to do, to do within the day to do that. Thank you. Next slide.
So we also have been handling operations, which is a pretty vast topic. However, we did come up with a protocol around building access from visitors and volunteers, as well as parents and guardians, as well as service and delivery personnel. So we have a protocol established for that. And we saw our role as being able to provide that to each school. And then they would have the ability to implement and execute that within their own school. In addition, we'll be coming up with procedures that will clearly look different for arrival and dismissal to the school, whether that's through the car rider area and drop-off through the bus arrival, or as some schools also have walkers. We know that we're not going to have students in large groups. So for example, at the north, at the middle school, at the west, students come in and they, they, they are waiting to go to their homeroom in the cafeteria. That will not be possible because that's 200 children in a room. So they will, we will have to figure out a staggered arrival to allow students to walk six feet apart directly into their classrooms and they will go right into their desk area. Bussing will be staggered as well. We've been working very closely with the transportation coordinator. And she's hoping that the buses will be staggered and not coming all at once, looking at all of the routes, et cetera. But they will have to wait until an adult from the building, a staff member comes out to help the students come off the bus so that they can guide them and keep them six feet apart upon entry. So we do envision, you know, markings on the cement, on the walkways, whether there are spots or dots, just like we see in the stores to help the students and remind the students to keep their distance. entrances and exits for specific grades or for specific buses to allow for that flow to be slower coming into the building and keep the students separated. Also, just moving into transportation, we are still awaiting guidelines from the DESC that are more specific, as Dr. Brand mentioned, about the number of students on the buses, et cetera. But we did speak with Lisa Ferretta and she said that the cleaning and disinfecting of the school buses and the mini buses will occur after each bus run. So after one cohort of students gets off of the bus and the next run begins with a different group, cleaning and disinfecting will take place. And of course, as we mentioned earlier, masks are required for all students who ride the bus as well as the bus driver. So it will look a lot different, but we are working on procedures and protocols to share with the schools once we're done.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Jeanette. Up next, focus group specifically attending to extracurricular and co-curricular activities. And I think we have both Sherry Parker here, who is, many of you know, is our CARES Program Coordinator, and Jonathan Miranda, Assistant Principal at the high school.
Hi. Thank you, Dr. Brand. I too would love to thank our committee. They were, they're excellent. They were hard workers. It's been really a pleasure working with them all and gathering this information. We've got quite a resource going. We're simply tasked with extracurricular and co-curricular activities, things that occur outside of the school day. Dr. Brand, if you could see the next slide. So the goal would be to provide as many opportunities as possible within the guidelines of safety with, from DSE, from MIAA, from the one with the public school district. Opportunities for athletics is really going to be stemmed from MIAA regulations and what DSE comes up with. The MIAA, the MIAA has pushed start of sports to sometime in September, I think the 14th, with a lot of protocols to follow. We're also waiting for the governor and Department of Ed to give us some guidelines regarding athletics. We broke our group into four particular subgroups. Clubs in general could run on a limited basis, as long as they can adhere to social distancing restrictions, whether they be outside the building, whether they be remote. We also talked about after, after-school performing arts, drama club, a cappella group, any, any group that performs outside of the school day, not part of the actual curriculum. And those are, the protocols are very difficult and in the, in the idea of safety are still coming through. As far as allowing students to sing in the same room together, allowing students to play an instrument in the same room. So we're waiting a lot more guidance on that as well. Athletics, as I said, the MIAA guidance is really important. The new date is December 14th for start of sports. But that is really dependent upon what the governor and the state put forward. And then CARES is that there's the fourth group we went into and I'm, Sherry will speak to that, I'm sure, in a moment. Co-curricular activities were defined as what happens as, in addition to the school day. So field trips are onsite visits and whatnot. And at this time, we didn't see this feasible, bringing other people into the building or sending students out to other, other locations just seems like an unnecessary risk at this time. And the areas of concern that we really have is the same as everybody, you know, establishing responsibilities between the school day and after-school day, locations and protocols and sick child protocols after school hours has been, it's been a hot topic. We're not able to have the same facilities available to us, to our clubs and our groups as we are during the school day. And I think with that, I'll ask Mr. Brand, Dr. Brand for the next slide and ask Sherry to speak.
Thank you, Jonathan. So CARES, of course, it's its own unique entity. We serve so many families in the community. And honestly, right now, we're in a holding pattern. We need to first have the school day schedule established. And then we will do our best to provide programming around that schedule. The CARES staff, as well as all of the after-school activities and extracurriculars, are going to follow the same medical and cleaning procedures that are established for the school day. CARES is very fortunate that we have our own nurse in our program. We've already worked on having an order, an extensive order of PPE ordered for us as well, for specifically our population of students. We will have, we already have permission to use the medical isolation rooms after school during CARES hours if needed. The reality is, is, you know,
The reality is, you know, we're just going to have to be reduced in our capacity of what we used to be able to do, at least initially. We prided ourselves on whoever signed up in time got a spot. But at this point, for safety reasons, we're going to have to limit that. We are going to establish cohorts by grade level. We're going to have consistent staffing as possible. And some of the changes I just wanted families to think about is where we used to allow flexibility in scheduling, it might be a matter of a full type of enrollment. For whatever days your child is physically onsite, if you need CARES, you're obligating yourself to our program. We have looked at as far as reducing our hours slightly or adjusting our programs so that we can make sure all the cleaning gets to be done at the end of the school day for the next for the next group of kids in the morning. And with the discussion of doing the half-day kindergarten now, we are investigating the possibility of trying to provide some sort of alternative program strictly for the early childhood centers. That is, again, going to be contingent upon space availability. But our goal is to, as always, try to service the families the best we can under the parameters that we have. And as everyone else, we are also waiting for some further guidance from DESI, specifically for before and after-school programs that is supposedly forthcoming. And we're waiting for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sherry and Jonathan. Certainly an important area as well as we try to think about all of the different aspects of our operations. And Jonathan did mention about athletics. The MIAA did recently they recently had a board meeting and did release a start date of September 14th. But I would point out to everyone that it is my understanding that the Department of Education has to take a final ruling on which direction sports is going to go. So I would caution folks for getting too excited about the thinking that maybe just the start of the fall season will be delayed and that everything will run as normal. That has not been determined yet, is my understanding. Okay, moving on to social emotional support. Trying to, of course, think about the wellbeing, not just instruction, safety, but also the overall wellbeing of our of our students. And so with that, tonight, I think we have, we'll be speaking Christine Murray, Kristen Walsh, and Ann Junkins. So I'm not sure who's going first, but.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Good evening. My name is Christine Murray and I'm the Coordinator of Behavioral Health and Social Emotional Support for the Wilmington Public Schools. I'm currently the co-leader of the Social Emotional Support Group with Kristen Walsh, the Principal of the Boutwell Early Childhood Center, who's with me tonight, along with Ann Junkins, who's an Educational Assistant at the Wildwood School. And we're here to provide you with a brief update of our work to date. Members of our group include Ann Junkins, Kim Kelly, Lena Phillips, Kristin Russo, Laura Stinson, and Steve Gardner, and Melissa Plowman. So I want to thank everyone for the wonderful support that we've had with this group and all their contributions. So it was really a diverse group of parents and school staff. Next slide. Please? Thank you. So when we began our work, our planning was guided really by our mission statement that our group will identify, develop, and implement any necessary plans, resources, or services to best support our students, families, and staff during the return to school in the upcoming school year. So as a group, we met weekly since the end of June to review the DESI guidance, but more specifically the mental health recommendations that came out from DESI in May. And that really helped us address the challenges that we faced, but also to further develop our strengths by utilizing a multi-tiered collaborative approach to support our school community. Kristen, I know you're going to move on.
Yep. So as a group, we identified and strengthened our established reports for the in-person hybrid model and also developed the necessary supports and resources required for the remote model for students, staff, and families. For students, some examples include a welcome-back screening, check-in survey, identifying student family needs based on the impact of COVID-19, consistent two-way communication, relationship mapping to help identify students' need, daily scheduled time for social emotional curriculum, counseling services, and crisis protocols.
Ann, if you want to discuss.
Okay. So for staff, to continue to support our staff and increase available resources, we are developing interventions to help our staff feel safe, secure, and supported around their return to school. Some examples of this include a staff wellness check-in survey, a coffee chat, care support systems, and the recommendations for further professional development opportunities to encourage growth both personally and professionally, to strengthen social emotional wellness for our staff. Thank you.
And for our families, some examples include delivery of consistent two-way communication, parent support groups, age-appropriate COVID-19 pills and resources, and then referrals for outside community agencies, including comprehensive wraparound services and crisis intervention. So our group continues to work diligently to create a comprehensive document that will reinforce the health, safety, and social emotional wellbeing for our students, staff, and families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Christine, and thanks, Kristen, for that update. We will press on to the next group, Teaching and Learning. And tonight, speaking on behalf of the focus group with an update, will be Linda Peters, Principal of the High School, and Suzanne Sullivan, Principal of the Warburn Street Elementary.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to thank our wonderful group, a large group, but a wonderful group for the work that they have done and the discussions we have had so that we were able to put together a pretty comprehensive document around what we feel are the priorities for teaching and learning. One of the things that we discussed at the very beginning was curriculum planning. And we did make a decision early on after meeting with Christine Elliott and Brian Regan at the time that the for-grade level and middle school and high school courses, the work for curriculum would be facilitated by the curriculum team leaders. So we did not make that a focus of our work. We decided to wait on that until the curriculum team leaders could work with their departments. We did take, you can go on to the next slide, please. Our work resulted in a number of recommendations that we made around a lot of different topics that we felt were related to teaching and learning. We did use the data from both the community and staff surveys. And from that data, it was very clear that consistency was very important to the learning of our students. And we do understand that with all of the models in place, and that could be set in motion at any time during the school year, depending on the state and local data related to the pandemic, we understand that health and safety is a priority, but we did want to focus our work on learning with a strong emphasis on social emotional components. We also understand that based on some of the reports that we have heard over the past week, that we are collaborating with the Technology Advisory Group as well as the Scheduling Group, based on some of the work that we have done with our group. We have discussed the topics that we felt were related to teaching and learning and have made recommendations based on just the review and also our discussions. We have a list of expectations for learning related to safety, attendance, work completion, communication, and assessment and grading. And each of these topics were discussed by grade levels and also for each model. We have recommendations made. We are really planning to put in place as much as possible what we already had in place prior to the pandemic. So many of our recommendations are what we ordinarily do or have done before we were stopped in March. So attendance will be taken. It will be tracked. We do have a policy around work completion and what the expectations are around that. We do plan on using or hopefully using a common platform for communication. We are looking at Google Classroom and Aspen as standard tools, tools that many of us already use. The expectation around communication would be that teachers would inform families about their means and frequency of communication right at the start of the school year and for any model that we're in. As far as assessment and grading, we know that grading is pretty much individual to teachers, maybe by grade level, maybe by courses, maybe by departments. But it's pretty individual in terms of how teachers grade, what they use to grade, how they evaluate students, what kinds of assessments they use on a regular basis. But we would like to put in place what we always have at the middle and high school. We have quarters. We'd like a schedule for mid-quarter and end-of-quarter reporting, just as we have done in the past. And I know it's a little different at the elementary school. I think they have trimesters and they work on standards-based grading, which they will continue. We also talked about and had recommendations around scheduling and structure. And that was very clear from the survey from families that they felt that structure was extremely important. And so we are looking at setting recommendations for making each school day structured in whatever model that we have in place, or whatever model we're following. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I think it's okay, Linda. I think you can keep going.
Okay, sorry. We also have, you know, some recommendations around instructional practices, but again, it may look different. It may feel different in terms of instruction, but it is instruction. We should have a plan for instruction, whether it's asynchronous or asynchronous or in-person learning. We also have talked a lot about resources for teaching and learning and how that impacts how we will manage throughout whatever model that we're using. We looked at the resources that we felt were very much could be used for both in-person and remote learning so that there would be continuity depending on whatever model that we are working with. And there would be familiarity with teachers and students. And the next slide, I think. So our recommendations were organized first by grade level and then by learning model. So our subgroups met together as grade level, in grade-level teams, as well as with the whole group. And they suggested recommendations for each of the topics. And we just combined all of that. And I think you'll see, once you see the whole document, that our work is a culmination of what we normally do and that we must be able to transition into what we will do based on any model that we are required to do at any time during the school year. And I think the next slide just shows just a sample, a small sample of how we organized our work. That's all. Suzanne, do you have anything that I missed?
I think you covered it very well, Linda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Linda and Suzanne. Thank you. Jumping in, we're going to keep moving forward and we have two subgroups left. First, access and equity. And I believe Christie Jones is going to speak on behalf of the subgroup. Christie is from social worker at the high school. Christie, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Perfect.
Oh, good. Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name's Christie Jones and I am here on behalf of the Access and Equity Subcommittee. I do want to mention that our group does recognize that this particular subject area of access and equity, it does extend into each and every subcommittee group. So there is definitely overlap in what our groups are discussing and addressing. Thank you. Next slide, please. The mission of this group is to ensure that all our student populations are given access to curriculum, services, and accommodations. And the focus areas include for us, assessment of learning loss, specific and individualized student and family needs, safety precautions, identification of obstacles that prevent full access and professional development. Many of the recommendations apply to all three of the learning models, in-person, hybrid, or remote. And we did also pay attention to allow for seamless transitions if we were to move back and forth through any of these three models. The recommendations that were brought forward are not only by the members of this subcommittee, but also to the data that we gathered from looking at the district and community surveys that have been going out. We do want to recognize that there are many issues we are addressing in this group. It is such a large category. But in the interest of time, I just want to highlight some of the key areas that we've been going through. So some of these key areas include translation of communication and curriculum for English learners and their families. We realize that there is a huge access need, that we need to make sure that the languages across the community are being, and the families that speak these languages are being able to get the communication they need and the curriculum is being delivered in a communication-friendly way. So we found translation to be a huge issue in this area. Am I still okay? Can you hear me all right? I don't know if I see people leaning forward. Okay, I just want to make sure.
You're good. You're good.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, we also looked at adjusting the PBIS lessons at the school-based teams to support with new expectations. We recognize that the start of school year is going to be like any other that our students have experienced. And there will be necessary learning and support needing to take place for students around the start of the school year and what that new normal looked like. Also, we talked about providing services. I think that's, if we could go to the next slide, please. We also looked at providing services in accordance with IEPs, 504s, and general education via the agreed-upon platform during both in-person and remote learning to decrease co-mingling of student groups. And this is recommended by DESI. Again, you'll see that in the DESI recommendations that we try to reduce co-mingling as much as possible. We also talked about the idea of exploring options of providing pre-recorded lessons. This way, families would be able to access these lessons at any given time as each family situation is different. And we realized that having access at any given time really does help our families be able to navigate sort of their schedules in a remote or hybrid situation or an in-person situation where families are choosing to keep their kids remote. Also, we've talked a great deal about additional PPE to be provided for staff and students who need it. Per DESI, they're asking that we come with masks, but we recognize there needs to be additional PPE available when that's not available to families or for staff. We also have discussed looking at making sure staff who deliver more specialized services, so for example, speech and language therapy, have the appropriate PPE to deliver that service. So for example, a clear face mask or shield for reading lips, just as one example. We also talked about, well, another area we're talking about is to continuing to offer virtual IEP meetings to comply with the social distance guidance from DESI so that their IEP meetings can still stay on target as they're supposed to and still allows families to partake in them, but in a safe way. We also talked, and you'll hear this term as you already have extensively, prioritizing high-need students for in-person learning. And you can look at the DESI definition of that. And we can also look at it in a more community-based way as who falls into that category. But some of those areas would include special education, English language learners, economically disadvantaged. And again, as a district, we can look at, you know, who else might fall into that category. And then just another area to highlight that we've talked a lot about is utilizing staff in different capacities and sort of cross-referencing staff licensure to help close gaps. As some staff, depending on, you know, using the model, some staff, we might be able to, based on licensure, use in other areas to help better staff and provide more accessibility to learning and support of learning on an online platform. And I just want to say again, in closing, this is a huge topic. This is just a small sample of a much larger menu of issues that we've been addressing in the group. And I just want to thank the subcommittee that I'm on and all the subcommittees for all the time and dedication they're putting forth in preparing to open for the fall because it is quite the task we have ahead. But I just want to thank you for your time tonight, everybody.
Thanks so much, Christie. That was great. All right, last but certainly not least, Ken Lord, our Director of Technology and Digital Learning, is going to speak to the Technology and Communication Focus Group. I'll turn it over to Ken.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. As each of the other co-chairs have mentioned, I wanted to thank our individual committee and the collaboration we've had with other subcommittees as well. It's been a really great opportunity to hear points of views from a wide variety of people. And all of the members of the committee you see here on the screen contributed quite a bit to the suggested recommendations that we're about to make. Next slide. So we basically separated into categories. And the first category we came up with was software. And we recognized the need to purchase and provide some additional software resources. And there's a list there on the screen for you. Several of these are, were in use already and had a free version, but they have limitations on the number of lessons you could post or the space you could use. So we are seeking to upgrade our G Suite, which is a Google Suite, to the Enterprise Edition. This will allow us to have access to expanded options of our Google Meet as well as originality reporting, advanced support, and a few other options. And then purchasing things like Screencastify, Classkick, Peer Deck, EdPuzzle, and renewing our Brain Pop subscriptions. As a district, we're recommending migrating from Zoom to Google Meet. The primary reason for this is where it's really unclear when Zoom is going to end their free unlimited service to education. So by moving to Google Meet, we'll be able to avoid that, as well as Google Meet has a really tight integration with Google Classroom that will help, you know, not missing meet invitations and stuff like that. As a district, we're also recommending we standardize on Google Classroom and will, a little later on, talk about providing professional development for that. Hardware is the second area we discussed. We want to make sure that we provide a loner device to all pre-K through five students, so they have a device to use at home. It's really not, it won't work if they have a shared device with another student. They really have to have their own device so they're not tied up with scheduling and waiting to get on that device. So right now, we're in the process of purchasing 500 additional Chromebooks for those loner devices. We want to also make sure that all our six through 12 bring-your-own-device students have an actual working device, while the vast majority have their devices. Always some that need repair. And then there's also, of course, the incoming sixth-grade parents are purchasing their device. And there is a worldwide shortage of Intel processors, which is really hampering the supply of Chromebooks. So we know many parents, you know, have done their best to try to locate one or unable to. So we want to be able to provide them one until they're, when they've ordered this come in. Some of them are coming as late as December. Carts of Chromebooks that are in pre-K 5, we're recommending that if they are to be used, they're assigned to a classroom for several days of the week. So they're there and those are signed one-to-one for the student in that classroom. So the pre-K five through five students would not be bringing a device back and forth. And then before they will move to another classroom, the OIT department would then clean them and sanitize them before they're then reassigned to another classroom. Any computer labs also need to be cleaned in between uses, so we're going to migrate as many of those as possible to using just the Chromebooks. And then the few that have required software will have to come up with a protocol to use them and also to spread those out to have the appropriate distancing as well, which is quite challenging, given the size of tables and the amount of space and wiring these, these computers require. Most of the computer labs, the elementary school, will likely be disassembled and the room repurposed for another reason or purpose. We're going to provide all of the educational assistance with their own Chromebook, so they're not trying to borrow out of the carts and trying to get on a computer. They have their own device that they don't need to share with anybody else. And then for teachers that are teaching at home in a hybrid or remote environment, where available, we're going to provide external monitors, document cameras, whatever we have to try to make their job as easy as possible. Professional development and parent-student technical support is, of course, a huge issue we need to tackle. We want to provide on a time-available basis. Faculty have professional development for all faculty in Google Meet and Google Classroom to make sure that everyone has a base knowledge also available, making some more advanced classes for those that are already using Google Classroom. And then provide additional support for things like Screencastify, Classkick, EdPuzzle, Peer Deck, and many other titles so that the faculty have the support that they need. For parents and students, we want to provide a library of self-help videos and info on our website. So parents like, oh geez, how do I log into this? They can go to the website, see some information, and provide them with support in that manner. And then also enhance our peer support models where teachers can help teachers. So perhaps establishing Google Classrooms by either grade level or school or department level, where they can share information back and forth and be, be that support for each other. Next slide. Work submission was an area we found a lot of comments in our surveys upon. So we want to make sure that we are utilizing electronic submission as much as possible when we're in that remote mode. When we're in the hybrid mode, perhaps work is handed in when they're on the in-person days and, or they're electronically through Google Classroom. We also want to try to limit the at-home printing requirements. We had a lot of comments in our survey about printing problems and things like that. So we want to make sure that, you know, we are providing them with the printed materials in the hybrid days and the in-person days and then providing pickup packets for those who cannot print at home. Communication is a big part of our subgroup. We want to suggest that email communications are on a scheduled basis, try to limit the amount of email overload and that all of our email communications that are important are archived on our website so a parent can go back and easily find a categorized list of information without having to search their email and try to find a message that may have come in the past. For communication for when we change modes of learning, if we have to change from in-person to hybrid or remote, that that will come from the district level and any school-based changes for individual classrooms or things like that will come from the school level. We also are encouraging regular assignment feedback through Google Classroom. And then for grading, we're suggesting six through 12 assignments and other grades remain in Aspen. And then pre-K 5 assignment grades will be viewed in Google Classroom with our standard, standards-based report card that we submit through Aspen. Technology Communications Group also gets into student outreach because it's a communication area. And we are suggesting that there are specific building-based plans for monitoring student engagement and well-being. We have ongoing check-ins and then we make sure that when an issue arises, we be sure to close the loop with faculty and bring it back so they know what's going on as well. And I think that's about it.
Thank you, Ken. Well, I want to thank all of those folks who spoke tonight for the focus group updates. It's, it's not lost upon any of us that this is a huge amount of information that we just put out there for you. It, it was merely intended to try and provide you with some insight in terms of the, the deep thinking and the key questions that so many of our folks in our working groups have been identifying. Again, they've still got some work to do, but you hopefully come away with a bit of a sense that there have been an awful lot of people who have been hard at work. And even though we don't have all of the final guidance and recommendations from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the community Wilmington, I think, should, should know that there's, there indeed has been a ton of work that's going on and will continue to try and best prepare us for school opening in the fall. So just a couple of key recaps and sort of where we're going from here. A week from today, again, I've asked final recommendations from our, from our eight focus groups and the advisory group as a whole to be submitted to, to me. We will, again, move forward with complying, of course, with what we need to with the Department of Education. And then bringing forward what I'm going to recommend sometime that week, either be August 5th or 6th, or therein, back to the school committee. So we would adjust our first meeting in August with the hope that we will have availability from, from members to seek the committee's approval of that final plan. But then will allow me to submit that to the Department of Ed on August the 10th, which is a Monday. And of course, so much more work to come throughout the month of August to prepare for a return to school in the fall. So with all of that, recognizing it is an awful lot of information you receive, but I or for those that are still here on our conference call, members of our group would be happy to take any questions if the committee has any at this point in time.
Dr. Brand, can you unshare your screen so I can see the committee? Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the committee members? Mr. Ragsdale and then Mrs. Burns.
Okay, I have, I have a lot here in categories. So I'll just do one and then spread it out around a little bit. And, and first, again, just very quickly, a thank you to, to Dr. Brand and to all of the members of these focus, focus group teams who have been just burning the candle at both ends ever since the end of school. School never ended for them. They just went right into the planning for the following school year and, and it's been a tremendous amount of work. And so thank you so much to everyone who's been doing that. I want to jump into maybe a question first about, for Ms. Crowe in the, or the health group, which is I wanted to hear if they're, what the current thinking is about around flu shots and what the district's approach or requirements should, should be on that.
So I think we're going to direct the questions to Dr. Brand and then Dr. Brand. You can certainly, if they're still here, they can certainly respond through you.
Sure. And, and actually, let, let me just, because while I'm on it, I just have one other health-related question, which is one of the most important things and it's been said over and over again, just broadly, is that people need to stay home when they're sick. How do we really make that emphasis that parents can't send their kids to school if they're, you know, if, if they're not feeling well? How do we, how do we really make that happen? Because it's, we always try to say that, but it's more important now than ever before. So I would, I guess, ask those two questions. Flu shots and actually trying to keep sick kids out of school.
I'm hoping Doreen is still on the line. Is she?
Yeah, I see her.
Okay, good.
Yep, I am here. Thank you. Good questions. So for flu shots, the school district will do what we do annually and will collaborate with the Board of Health for flu clinics. And Shelley Newhouse and I will discuss whether or not we'll hold any school-based flu clinics like we've done in the past. But she has been doing flu clinics for children and for families for, for several years now. Most children do receive their flu vaccine from their primary care provider or their medical home. So that will, will also happen. And obviously, flu vaccine can be, flu vaccine can be received from any of the local pharmacies and other flu clinics that are available. In terms of keeping kids home, if they're not feeling well, I think that, that, you know, we are going to do the best that we can to enforce that and to stress the importance of that, especially during the, during the global pandemic. It will be really important for anybody with any type of symptoms to remain home. That includes students and staff members.
Thank you, Doreen. Mr. Rex, I think you have more, but I'm going to go to Mrs. Burns and then.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I had some, I know this is still a work in progress. I was debating whether or not to even ask questions because I know there's so much work done and so much more to come before it gets re-presented to us as a final plan. But I'm, I'm really kind of quite interested if Mrs. McMenman, Mrs. McMenman or Ms. Cork is available with regards to the cohorts that they're considering and reviewing, you know, alternate models for hybrid. Not being familiar with that, I know that you had referenced an A/B model that you wouldn't be recommending because of the length of time teachers wouldn't see students. I'm not, I, I wanted to, I, I may have another question, but I just kind of wanted to understand what that particular cohort looked like to get a better understanding as why you, you wouldn't be recommending it. I'm looking, I'm thinking in more of a vocational stance. I know that kids go from academics to shop week to week kind of thing, but I, I just didn't know if that was a similar thought process.
Specifically, the Week A, Week A, Week A, Week B was what we were talking about. It didn't seem to be a fit because that would mean one cohort, half of the school would come one week and then the other half of the school would come the other week. And we just felt there were too many days from that Friday to the following Monday to be independent and on their own with the remote. But there are of hybrid models that we are reviewing and studying. For example, an AMPM model, similar to what Dr. Brand talked about earlier for the early childhood, when you think back to when we had half-day kindergarten. So it would be half-day cohorts. Half of the school would come in the morning or half the class. The other half of the class would come in the afternoon. We're looking into the feasibility of that. Is that possible with transportation? Grab-and-go lunches, all of those pieces of the puzzle. Another one we're looking at is A-Day, B-Day. So that would mean that the students would come two days a week, A-Day and, and A-Day cohort, B-Day cohort. I'm going to throw you for a loop here. Then there would be the AA and the BD and you would go in a row and then two days in a row. So basically, we're exploring as a group all of those possible hybrid models, knowing that with the six-feet social distancing, especially if we're eating snack or taking a mask break that, or lunch, that we have to probably not have a full return and, and go with the hybrid as Dr. Brand mentioned. Those are some of the models that we're talking about.
Okay, only because I, you know, and I, and I appreciate that. I'm sure you've touched upon it too, but I just felt a little compelled that I think because of the consistency, I think it's going to be key for this to be, to whatever, whichever one that you would, you will bring forth for our diverse learners, going back and forth, day on, day off. Not have, even, I don't know if you even, what, if the discussion for flip classrooms, so to speak, that can be modified into, into part of this so that there is continuous learning. I know that my, I have my daughter who's in extended school year. She will be going into school for three hours next week, the whole week. But in the interim, while they are doing it week to week, they are also, there are also classes that they're having for those students who are still learning remote. So I, you know, granted, I, I know it's a, a larger piece to kind of juggle, but I just, it's the consistency for our students, and I think especially our diverse students is going to be key as, as into which model would give us the best outcomes for them and support. So, but, but I think, I know it's not an easy task. I know it's not an easy task with so many variables. But I, I do appreciate your response, Ms. McMenman.
And I will add that, you know, when we talk about the A/B cohorts and consistency, we are also discussing as access and equity was that certain special needs populations, EL populations, and really students that are at risk would be more consistent. Those small groups or smaller groups within schools would be more consistent, even if we were on an A/B day.
Yeah, I, I just, I think, and forgive me, and that, I don't want to keep this because I know Mr. Ragsdale's got a laundry list waiting. But I just, even for those kids who, and you're absolutely right, because that's, I think, a priority of mine as well. But even those kids who may not be on 504s, IEPs, that, but, but do learn in a, you know, a different way and they access in a different way. And sometimes it's through the performing arts that they're able to learn. I mean, there are a lot of different pathways that kids learn that, that may not be necessarily supported. I just want to make sure that, that equity, even for the, for those who you may not recognize as needing that right off the bat, do get that support because this, again, it's, I think it throws everybody for, it's, it's a different way of approach to learning and education for these kids. And I just want to make sure that they too are adequately supported. They may not need as many, but, but they do get that, you know, they do get that support irregardless. But, and I, and I know you'll, you'll absolutely address it. I just wanted to just, you know, note it, I guess. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Mr. Smaha.
Yeah, and again, I'll echo what other people have said. I really want to thank, this is so much work and I have a million, I have a million questions, but I'll try to just keep it just, just to one. And I don't know if it's a question more so or a comment, because I don't know if there's necessarily an answer, but after reading through DSE's protocols, one of the things that's, that's really But after reading through Desi's protocols, one of the things that's, that's really stood out to me is this idea of if there is a positive case, the sort of ripple effect of that and to go to what we were just speaking about with these A B cohorts. So if you're, if you're a teacher, for example, and you have, you know, your A group on Monday and your B group on Tuesday, if the kid in your A group tests positive and now you have to quarantine, now you're not available for your B group. So that B group has now lost a teacher. And I'm just saying, so it's, you know, as you can see, it's a sort of ripple like domino effect. And so I guess one of my questions would be, is there enough substitute and coverage in case of situations like this? Is that, which group would be thinking about those types of things?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a great question. I think a couple of things, you know, I won't speak specifically to the, sort of the health contention with, with that kind of situation. But generally speaking, what, what I think people do need to keep in mind here is as we establish these plans, there's a, there's a duality here of, of trying to take stock of the staff that we are also going to have in person. Right? And that that has to be like, all districts are sorting that out right now as we speak to get a, a clear handle on which staff we should expect to be returning in person and which may not be under the respective laws and, and, and means for employees not to return to work. So that is being sorted out as we, at the same time, track all of these models and try to develop a plan. So that's one thing that we're going to have to figure out a staffing approach for and, and figure that out. But also, there's little question that there's some growing question and concern around substitutes. You know, in, in, in general, and I'm hearing this from my colleagues, will there be substitutes who are even going to want to do that work? Will, will there be enough of a supply? Would, would we want new substitutes coming into a building every day that doesn't know those specific procedures or approaches or protocols, et cetera? Those are all good questions that I don't have an answer for right now. But it's also on this lengthy list of things that we have to attend to. I don't know if we're talking about hiring some permanent subs. I mean, there's, there's, there's funding for, there's a funding stream that's opened up through various sources to help provide for things such as PPE and other things. But there's not a new funding source to, to tackle staffing per se, necessarily, at least right now. So those, those are things that we have to sort of co-mingle together. What staff are we going to have in place just in general? And how are we going to approach the substitute management?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Brand and Mr. Smaha. Other questions or comments? Heading back to you, Mr. Ragsdale. Don't worry. I'm just looking.
Oh, I mean, I, I, I'll let Mr. Ragsdale go.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll go back to you, Mr. Ragsdale and then, and then back to Mr. Smaha, I think.
Okay. I actually just want to follow up on, on sort of Ms. Burns' questions about schedules for a moment. Because in the, in the parent, in the, in the community survey, there was basically an equal split under the preferences for the hybrid model of the alternating, alternating days. So you, that would just be, you know, one week, your Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the next week, your Tuesday, Thursday, and what they called a set schedule. And I, I know, I think that Ms. McMenamin was talking about this, but it went by just a little bit fast past me. And so I wanted to kind of clarify what those set schedules might look like. Is that kind of like the A B, A A that, that she was discussing? Or, or could that encompass some additional ideas?
I'm not sure if you're talking about the A Bs or the schedule for the actual school day. I think that it would be, I think we were very much listening to parents and saying that it had to be set. For example, if it were, if you were part of a Monday, Wednesday cohort, you would need to know that in advance and you would perhaps be able to secure daycare for other full days. If it was in a rotation, you can't, you can't necessarily secure a daycare spot every other Thursday. So we were talking about having it be static and that it wouldn't have a rotation. I think, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question.
Okay. So what might a hypothetical two weeks of school look like for a student who's on that static schedule? What days would they be attending?
We haven't determined fully, but we are looking at perhaps you are a Monday, Wednesday student or a Tuesday, Thursday student. We haven't determined the days of the week and there might even be only two days a week to make it consistent in that respect. And perhaps a fourth day or the fifth day would be some sort of a remote check-in, social emotional check-in, where the students would be at home. And then there would be also time for collaboration and planning for teachers. We're, we're still working out the details.
Okay, so.
But you, once you would be assigned to a cohort, you would stay in that cohort. And the idea was to keep siblings and twins together, so they would be in the same cohort at the elementary level.
Okay. And so the idea is there that every week would look the same, that you might be in school Monday and Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday. And then, you know, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday for you are some form of remote learning. Happens. Okay. So you have complete consistency. There's not even like a, you know, a Tuesday, Thursday, one week, Monday, Wednesday. I get it.
Right.
We're even looking at how many, for example, holidays and things of that nature and how that would affect a given week and how we can still maintain consistency, knowing that there would be days off, for, for example, for a holiday and what schedule we can do so that it's as consistent as possible.
And equitable.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, having that spare day as a check-in day and also a day when, you know, teachers are more able to collaborate with each other, sounds like that might be a, a great opportunity.
We thought that that would support the consistency in the cohesiveness of the curriculum.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Mr. Smaha?
Um, yeah, I guess. By the way, I, I really liked that, that the thinking about the consistency of, of one, you know, of it, of it staying the same. I think that's, especially for working families, I think having a consistent schedule is incredibly important. Because not every family, you know, has somebody who's always at, you know, always, always at home. So thinking about people and, and work schedules. Like my other question, or one of my other questions pertains to technology and it's about adequate internet access. So if we are doing this sort of, if, if it ends up being this hybrid model, we're switching to remote learning, how are we sort of making sure that all of our students have equitable access to the internet? I know there's devices, but then there's the actual, you know, internet.
Sure. Desi requires us to make sure that every student has adequate internet. So right now I'm in the process of surveying families. So we put out a survey to every family to identify what their student had for a device and what they had for Wi-Fi availability at home. So through that survey, I've identified a group of families that need assistance. We've purchased hotspots that we can sign up to those families as well as work with them to perhaps use something like Comcast's Internet Essentials, which is a very low-cost monthly service. But it's our duty to make sure that that's taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Lord. Thank you, Mr. Smaha. All right. I'm, I'm just gonna do a scroll. Mr. Bjork, Ms. Newhouse, I don't want to not see you. Okay. All right. Mr. Ragsdale?
Okay. So technology, I'll jump into technology for a second here. About the, with the migration of, if we migrate from Zoom to Google Meet, how do we plan to bring families along on that journey as seamlessly as possible? Because I know that a lot of families just sort of just feel like they got down. Finally, you know, they finally know how to Zoom and it does have pretty good ease of use. And so they're finally comfortable with the pieces of it. And now we're saying, no, actually, we're going to potentially shift to a new tool. How do we make that as easy as possible for families to come along?
Sure. Google Meet, as long as, I mean, it's not just Google Meet. We want to make sure that every piece of software we're using, we bring families and students along. So we're going to be creating, we're not going to recreate. There's lots of resources we're going to pull together and coalesce on our website to provide families with the instructions necessary to utilize that. I actually believe that Google Meet will be easier for them to use because the invite link is embedded right in the Google Classroom. It's not something that has to be emailed out or sent. It's right there for them. They can click, their student can log in. It's right there to join into the Google Meet. And it operates very, very similarly to Zoom. The concern with Zoom is that they're giving us free unlimited access now, but there's been no end date scheduled. So we really want to start the school year all on consistently the same platform, not having to suddenly switch mid-year. So that, that's the primary reason for moving to Google Meet, as well as its tight integration with Google Classroom. So with any of the software that we're using, we need to make sure we're providing families with instruction and support at home.
Okay. And, and on one of your slides, it said that we're purchasing 500 additional Chromebooks. But you also talked about the limited availability of Chromebooks because of the explosion of remote learning. So what kind of availability if students are having trouble in, you know, the one-to-one program in grade six and up, getting their devices, then what, what kind of availability is there going to be for, for us as a district?
Yes, I had originally arranged for those 500 to be delivered mid-August. I have another 325 on order also due mid-August. The 500 seems to be, might, I may have some delivery problems with that. But we have a sufficient number in our carts to be able to supply the students with the loaner for home, because that will be the number one priority. To be honest, in a hybrid model, I'm not sure how much technology use is going to be on the in-person days. Because there's so much that they can't do when they're at home. They're going to want to do those in-person things when they have them. So the priority is going to be use our devices that we have to get them at home. We have a, a, an inventory of a little over 700 on our carts. Plus we have the 325 that's confirmed to come in, in August. And then the 500, I just learned today is going to be delayed a little. So those will backfill the carts when the, when those come in.
Thanks.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Lord. I don't have questions. I'm just going to make a couple of notes that I'd asked the committee member, the committees to consider for technology and communication. I see that, I know that the parents were surveyed. Just not sure if the students in six to 12 were surveyed. So you don't need to ask, answer that. But if they're not, it might be helpful to see what. Oh, you're there again. I see you.
They, they have, they, they were part of the same survey.
So they did have a chance to report that. Okay, great.
And we're still, so now I'm taking those results, finding out who I didn't answer, get an answer from. I'm going to be targeting those families to get, to make sure I try to get as close to 100% of an answer as possible.
That's great. Thank you. Because I would imagine some of those middle high schoolers probably have a better sense of what they would need moving forward than, than their parent. Okay, great. And then to David's point regarding keeping six students home, I just want to encourage us to sort of think about attendance policies and possible sort of remote check-ins for students to say that they are in attendance, even if they're not able to be there, whether it's they have symptoms or they're quarantining because someone in their cohort has become ill. So just to not, I know a lot of students or families feel this need to strive for attendance in schools or 100% attendance. Obviously, there's the other issue of needing school, so we can, we can go to work. So I just wanted to have us as a committee think about what that might look like and how we can be supportive throughout this year, because I imagine attendance will, will become an issue. And and that's all, that's all I have. I have, well, I have other questions and, and comments, but I think that I'm going to hold and wait until we see another draft of some of this prior to it being submitted to Desi. And I would like to thank Dr. Brand and the reopening committee for such a professional and thorough presentation and all the work you've done, as everyone has said. I know the work has been really intense and we do appreciate it. Also to the school committee members for being so readily available as we move through this process and for, for responding so quickly and all the work you've been doing behind the scenes as well. Are there other questions or comments that you need an answer to at this moment? Mr. Smaha?
Hi, I don't necessarily know if it's an answer. I just want to mention that it's not necessarily COVID-19 related, but thinking about, you know, you know, reopening schools and thinking about sort of anti-bias and anti-racist approaches to, to what we're doing and sort of keeping that, you know, in the backs of our minds as we're doing any of these things is, you know, how is, how are any of these procedures, protocols, anything that we're doing, how is it going to impact, you know, different groups of people? So I want to keep that sort of in the forefront of our minds as we're, as we're thinking about reopening and thinking about what are the types of curriculum? You know, what are we going to, you know, you know, what are we going to be doing when we get back to learning? So I just wanted to have that in there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smaha. Mr. Ragsdale?
I'll, I'll wrap up with two, two final questions. We've, we've been here a long time. The first one is, what do we anticipate right now to be the, I guess, budgetary impact so far of our reopening plannings? I mean, the couple of obvious ones are just like technology that we're purchasing, a lot of additional technology that we need. The PPE. This is, you know, a, a lot of districts, of course, are talking about unplanned expenses. Dr. Brand, you mentioned the budgetary aspect of substitutes and just staffing in general. I know that Mr. Ruggiero isn't here on the call, so maybe this is something to talk about at the next meeting when, when he's available. But I just wanted to ask broadly speaking about what, what does, what does this look like as an impact on our budget?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll speak, I'll speak generally. So first off, you know, there, we, we've been fortunate to have the partnership and support of the town with one of the first grants that became available. And that's where we were able to purchase most, if not all, of the PPE. That earlier list that I showed you. But there continues to be a, a stream of some resources through grant, various grant options that I think would be good to sort of wrap up together with, with Paul's help at, at a future meeting to be able to show you that sort of what, what that funding is looking like and where the preliminary thinking is in terms of where we can target that. So what I, you know, outside of PPE and certainly the Chromebook piece that Mr. Lord talked a little bit about, some of which is wrapped up in capital. You know, part of the capital support from the town, some is not. And I think that what's going to continue to evolve over the course of the next couple of weeks is what additional expenditures are that we might have and how we can align those with, with the grant funds that we have available. So to this point in time, at this very moment, I, I don't see an encroachment upon our current planned operating budget. But it's still quite early, to be honest, in terms of wrapping our arms around exactly what our respective fiscal costs might be associated with all of our, of our operations. So we, we certainly should be reporting back to you and, and with Paul's help, we'll do that in a subsequent meeting.
Okay, thanks. And, and one, one last question, just that we, you know, we knew from our, from our community survey and our experiences during the spring that, you know, many, many parents were disappointed with, you know, the overall rollout of remote learning pretty much across the Commonwealth and understandably, since everyone just had to kind of switch on a dime to a method of instruction that they, that they, you know, simply had no experience in. Under the plans that we're contemplating for this fall, remote learning is going to be a, a part of it. And I, for the reasons that you outlined, I, I agree with the, with the preliminary thinking about a hybrid model to open, to open the school year. So remote learning is going to be a part of that. And for some people who are, who are going all remote, a lot of the different, there, there are many different pieces of this, which is both technology and access and equity and teaching and learning. So a lot of the different focus groups touched on aspects of this. But can you speak sort of holistically about how we're thinking about making remote learning as effective as, as possible, given sort of the lessons learned that we had over the spring? Now that we have a little bit of, you know, distance and time for reflection from them?
Well, I, I think, I think first off, what, what I'm pleased with is that the commissioner has spoken to the, and I believe I mentioned this earlier tonight, to put some, some clear sort of stakes in the ground, if you will, in terms of expectations around how we're, how districts are and educators are expected to sort of contend with this, whether it's, it's a temporary remote situation or whether it's with our cohort of students that, whose families may opt to keep them at home. And so, you know, it is, it is, is going to be considered more focused time on learning with broader expectations from the Department of Education that we are going to have to develop our systems and our personal, personnel around to, to ensure that there's continuous learning. So we still have some work to do feeding off of what the focus groups or the subgroups are, are going to identify. But, you know, what we know to be, what we know to be the case right now is we are going to open the school year with a cohort of students. to open the school year with a cohort of students who are going to be in remote learning. We just know that. They've already indicated that. I mean, not formally, but through the survey. And so we, we know those names, we're gonna be, we've gathered those through the survey. And we're gonna have to develop a systematic way to ensure that we have the necessary robust teaching and learning that's gonna meet, you know, the students' needs the best they can in that circumstance, that then can be mapped onto a larger cohort of kids or the entire district should it need be, where, you know, we have to move or shift along the continuum to a remote learning. So I'm optimistic of what seems to be coming from the commissioner that will be helpful and, and quite frankly, a set of expectations that districts are gonna, I'm sure, gonna have to report on, report out on in a way that wasn't the case in the spring.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. Thank you, Dr. Brand. Okay. Can I move on? All right. I'm sure people, I see people are already starting to, to sign off. And so before everyone, not the school committee, don't go anywhere, before anyone else says, decides to log off, I just wanna say thank you very much for your participation and for being so invested in this process and the reopening plans for, for our, our children. We deeply appreciate that you are here with us. And those of you who submitted public comments, thank you very, very much. Would encourage the public to, to reach out if you have remaining questions. Talk to people that you know in the, in those groups. They may be your neighbors and your friends. You can email us and try not to have lots of dialogue on Facebook because I think it really is best if we can sort of do this dialogue together in ways that are professional and thorough and we can give you the answers that you need. So thank you, thank you so much for being here. Encourage those who aren't here to look at the website tomorrow so they can see the full presentations. And if there are any remaining questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. You're more than welcome to stay, but I just wanted to say that before we, we moved on. So thank you again, reopening committee. Thank you very much, Dr. Brand. When you first told me there were gonna be 60 people on this reopening committee, I was a little bit surprised. And I have to say that I am really impressed with the level of work and the incredible commitment that everyone has volunteered this summer after such a trying spring to just jump right in and get to work again is just beyond impressive and we are grateful. Moving right along, we are going into first reading of school committee policies, JCAC, JCLB. These are not brand new to us, but we did have to bring them back for a first read. Mr. Raxdale, can I pass this over to you? Do you mind? So first we have, I just haven't, I haven't had them right in front of me, but we have JCAC, which is the residency enforcement policy for the Wilmington Public Schools. And I believe there was a question or comment, Mrs. Burns, thank you.
So I was curious with the addition to caregiver, because I'm not sure if I understand as to its usage in this policy. Because what I surmise it to be, I'm actually a little concerned. So a caregiver to me doesn't seem like a legal representative. So I didn't know if it had a more expand, expanded understanding. I just, and if that's the case, I guess my first question is, how is the caregiver piece used in this policy? Is it, you know?
So I can, I can address that somewhat, that the caregiver language actually comes from the law. So this comes from MGL Chapter 201F, which is specifically about caregiver authorization affidavits. So that this law says that parents and guardians can sign an affidavit that basically gives a caregiver certain legal rights to make health and education decisions. It does specifically say in the law that it can't be done for the purpose of attendance at a particular school. And that's why they actually provide a sample affidavit that ours is modeled after. Ours contains the language that I affirm I have not been designated as the student's caregiver solely for the purpose of establishing the residence within the town of Wilmington for the purpose of, of schooling. So that, that's where the language comes from. The reason that caregiver is mentioned is because it comes from the law and specifically a law that allows parents and guardians to transfer some legal authority for schooling to a designated caregiver.
So, okay, so the law just simply says caregivers. It does not make any kind of distinction with regards to the affidavit. David is something I am familiar with, but it's not being familiar with this piece. I mean, granted, I guess you could reference the law itself, but not being familiar with this. I just didn't want to have it assume that if, let's say, grandparents or babysitters are within our community and it's, you know what I mean? It's a convenience thing. I, you know, I just wanna make sure that there is still some legal attachment to, to that and not just, you know.
Right. You can't, you can't just sort of designate, you know, someone as a caregiver. You have to execute a legal affidavit that is, that has been signed and notarized that formally transfers that legal authority. But again, the law specifically says that that can't be done for the purposes of attending a particular school. And so we're, we're just mirroring that legal language in our residency enforcement policy.
I just, let me, and that's fine. I've got, I've got, I take no issue to it. It just doesn't seem, because it's, it isn't in addition to this policy. And I'd like to, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna crunch on it, see if anything comes to fruition. It just doesn't seem clear in reading that policy that, with that specification, although you do reference the law at the bottom. I just, I appreciate that. That's, that's quite helpful, David. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. And then there was another question, I think, David, you had about how often?
Yeah. So, so at the last meeting, we had talked about that we didn't want to have an annual school committee vote on whether to re-prove residency, that we, for the most part, wanted to leave that to the discretion of the, of the superintendent. But we did put in, and what it currently states right now in the red line version is not less than every two years. And upon thinking about that for a little bit, that just seems awfully frequent to me, that every two years, as a matter of course, we're going to make, you know, every family in the district reprove residency. That would be doing it six times over the course of educational career running through our whole system. And, and that, that seemed simply too, too frequent to me as a matter of policy and that I think that we should reduce the, sort of the mandatory frequency and leave it more up to the discretion of the superintendent of whether it seems necessary on a more frequent basis.
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. Ms. Burns?
I have to agree with David with regards to the two-year term. And I, I take no issue with leaving it to the discretion of the superintendent, but it, I only, I don't like it, I particularly do not like it open-ended in the sense that, that I think we should have a cap at some point, whether it's five, whether it be 10 years, because, I mean, it directly impacts our school numbers, our budgets. I mean, we still have, we play a role that's still kind of is under our umbrella that we need to be mindful of. And, and, I mean, you know, I, but I would put language in that, you know, no, no, no less than 10 years, something to that. I mean, because if the superintendent finds a need where it needs to be assessed before the 10 years from the previous one, then I, you know, I mean, I'd like to keep that open door. But I think we, we do need to regulate. Otherwise, I think we could go decades, especially if we're going through pandemics and God forbid, how long this could continue. That's not, you know, it just, it may go decades before it's even thought of again or, I don't know. I just wanted to, I think I feel better with sort of like a cap and not like a black and white.
So I, I think that David had recommended, you were gonna recommend four years, but I just wanna maybe ask Dr. Brand if he has a preference here? Sorry, you know where we are.
Yeah, I do. No, I don't have a specific preference. I think there's still the flexibility so that if there's information that, you know, emerges, the superintendent can act on it, but obviously we'll seek to follow policy. I think four years would be fine. I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other.
Okay. All right. Mr. Raxdale, four or five years, what, do you have a preference?
I think five years would be fine.
Five years would be fine. I agree. How does the rest of the committee feel about five years? Seeing some nods. Yeah, okay, looks great. Five years it is. Does that sound, does that clear? Is that good? Okay, so we'll change that. We'll keep the caregiver, you can think on that a little bit before the second read, Mrs. Burns, and then obviously reach out to someone in the subcommittee if you wanna discuss that and that.
If I have any.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we'll change that, two years, Mrs. Dixie, to five years, which is in the second bullet under the procedure for collection of Wilmington proof of residency.
Yes, I'll make that change. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anything else in this policy?
Nothing for me.
Anyone else? Okay. So we'll bring that forward for a second read in August. And then we have JCLB, inoculations of students. Questions or comments? No? Okay. So it looks like we can bring that forward for a second read in August. Did I go too, I can't see you all when I have all my stuff pulled up. So does that sound okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good to me.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. I'm seeing none. Correspondence?
None this evening.
Thank you. Future school committee dates. So here it says August 12th and August 26th, but as Dr. Brand mentioned earlier in his update, we're probably gonna need to move that August 12th into the week prior, which is gonna be August 5th or 6th. So if you could hold those days or email, email Mrs. Dixie if you can't do one of those days tomorrow, that would be great, just so that we can get something else scheduled. Dr. Brand, does that mean we'll still have the one on the 12th or are you seeing that we can then wait until late August?
Yeah, a good question. I think, and I think we should probably think on that. I mean, depending on, you know, other overarching needs, but I definitely think that the, I don't know that we need to keep the 12th, but.
But we may wanna come back and do something the week before the 26th, potentially. So we will, we'll work on that and be in touch with you as soon as possible. If you happen to know that there is a real conflict, please, please let me know. Mrs. Burns?
Just quickly, is it anticipated that on the 5th or 6th, it would be our usual seven o'clock start?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. And that will be to review the plan before, well, to approve it before it gets sent to the department.
Yes.
Excellent. All right. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
If I could just add one thing, if I may, not about reopening, and I forgive me for not adding it earlier, but the discussion around racism in this is an important time period. Some, but maybe not all, know this, that we have, we have approximately 90 Wilmington Public Schools staff who are or will be participating in a book study. The book is White Fragility: Why It's So Hard For White People To Talk About Racism. And thanks to the donations of the, what I understand to be the Massachusetts Teachers' Association who provided for the books, there are 90, I'm told, the staff who are going to be involved in that discussion. So I think a great testament to, to the overarching commitment and as I think I've said before, certainly something that I feel strongly and would be appropriate for us to revisit our strategic plan in terms of actionable steps, you know, in the near future to try and put some more stakes in the ground around how we move forward as a school community on that. But I just thought I would share that information through those to, to all those staff who are involved.
Thank you very much. Teachers have been very busy this summer, and so let us make sure we are very grateful for all the work that our, our teachers are doing throughout these months to also prepare for the reopening. And Ms. Elliott, we didn't officially welcome you to your first school committee meeting. I think this is the first full school committee meeting, so I wanted to say welcome and we're happy to have you here.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
You picked, you picked a nice, long one for your, though I have to say, it's a little better than I thought it might be. So, all right. So is there anything further before we have a motion for adjournment? Okay, it's lovely to see you all and I, we will see you early August. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you and good night. Thank you, WCTV. And we will see you all soon.